Yes.
Okay.
Oh, Eldred's here too.
My pleasure.
Yes.
We have a super forum. Yes, so I am calling this meeting to order. I am running my first ever full board meeting, so please bear with me because I am no Shaw Everly Bradwell. I know Shaw Everly Bradwell and I am no Shaw Everly Bradwell.
That's okay, you're more relaxed.
Okay. So we, I'm going to adjutate a motion to enter into executive session.
I am moved to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussions regarding proposed pending or current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law, and matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
All right.
Second.
You call it paper? Good. Okay, we're back. Recording. Okay. Apologize for the length of our absence, but pressing business. But we're back. And I don't believe there's any modification of the agenda. Okay. And we don't have, do we have anyone starting up for a public comment? Okay, moving on. Then we have student reps.
Yay.
They're over there. Oh, Zara's over there.
I've been devoted to her.
I'm glad to see you all together.
Hey, mind your own.
It's a promotion.
Uh, and uh
It's actually demon.
This was a good corner to hang out.
I know, we were having a great conversation.
And I didn't even know where to point you. Uh, Zara, do you want to go out with? Oh, yes.
Sure, okay. Um, Stella is once again absent due to basketball practice. It's from six to eight sometimes, so happening. Um, we are starting in preparation for our Regents Week. Uh, this also, this entails for us our MAP performance-based assessment tests, uh, ELA, also the ELA Regents. Uh, and then on January first, or Janu- January twenty-third, we're having a mental health day, uh, for the student body, which will involve workshops about mental health and kind of just trying to bring more awareness to that. Um, this will also start our student-like conferences. This is where we read our written evaluations and kind of set goals as an entire, with the family group leaders of their respective students. Um, for high school students, this begins the conversation around the four-year plan, which is your classes that you're going to take, what in-depths you're trying to take. In LACS, you need two classes that you're kind of going in-depth in or excel at. Yeah, you're going in-depth in, you're trying like an art portfolio uh, or taking two classes or more classes than are required amount. Um, that is required for an LACS student to graduate, and this is where we start having those conversations of what you're moving forward with. Uh, we have the Addams Family, January twenty-seventh, that weekend. Before, um, I talked about the Viva Restance, a, a performance by Face and History of speeches of the resistance to the Holocaust. We raised, uh, over three thousand dollars from the single run, which is pretty crazy because we only have like three hundred kids, so that means we made a lot of money. Um, Side Base Council met again, and we talked about the foundations of our school. Couple, I think around, I'm gonna say around forty years, I'm not sure of the exact date. Uh, a proposal was brought to here about the foundations of our schools called the Lavender Document. And as Side Base Council, we read the document and kind of looked back on the reflection of what is the foundations of our schools, you know, in like, pretty much the seventies, maybe eighties. Um, and that was really just powerful to do, to kind of look at, why are we here today? Uh, we currently soon will have the consortium meeting, which is down near York City, on January twenty-ninth. This is the twenty-fifth anniversary. Uh, you guys are gonna get invited by Dev to come down, it's in New York, the city. We are the oldest school attending significantly, by around twenty years. Um, we are kind of seen as like one of the matriarchs, if we could call it, in this community. Um, the Public Education Democracy Class, which is juniors and seniors, is going down to the city. And four students, which I'm very happy to be a part of, and me and Stella, uh, are going down, and this is getting funded by the consortium, to go down and present and watch, and kind of talking about this kind of progressive education movement that's happening, especially in New York. Um, and then next meeting, you guys are excited, Katrina Leif is going to be selling citrus, and so you guys can finally buy citrus from us. Uh, yeah.
Thank you, Zara.
Alright, it is nice seeing everyone for the first time since winter break at Weeks for Us. Uh, midterm exams are in two weeks, and IHS has lots of exciting events coming up. The Tattler released its literary issue featuring student talent and photography art and letters. Club Rads and TSA have officially started build season, and competition season is approaching for Xan, Olympia, Gray Team, and many other clubs. Another exciting event was Pitch Night. Students taking PBD, which is engineering, design, and development, over a course of three months participated in customer discovery and research to develop a solution in their children's problems. Uh, Grace's team, for example, are working to create a smart lab environment for lab research, and another team is developing glass is clean pool on the ground. Students were given the opportunity to present their solutions in a Shark Tank-style presentation and were awarded money by judges to continue to develop their platform. We are continuing to meet with Mr. Shombo regarding mental health studies. So currently, while we wait to schedule a meeting with Anna Tows, we shifted gears to a discussion about how IHS could offer mental health support at the school level. So we had an opportunity to talk to our school psychologist, Sean Goodman, at our meeting, and, um, new ideas that we developed include an improved system with the addition of direct online scheduling by students for appointments, especially for those who are not comfortable coming in to be offered and asking for help, and as well as a designated office specifically for drop-ins during the school day. Uh, these are all suggestions for now, but we are hoping some of these ideas are turned into reality very soon. And our ultimate goal is to make sure that any student has access to resources at any time. We're also continuing to brainstorm new ideas with Mr. Shombo about communication and student support. Our next steps are to meet up with our school counselors, hear this, hear their thoughts, and see business.
Yeah, we also watched the recording of the HR meeting from a week ago and are concerned about the issues that this presents for students at IHS. High turnover rate unfilled teaching position, as well as teaching position being filled by uncertified teachers affects students in classrooms, as does low teacher morale and teacher burnout. Low teacher pay was a concern brought up at the meeting and an issue that teachers have mentioned in the meeting. Um, I've also spoken with teachers who have brought up issues with student behavior and discipline, and they were frustrated about a perceived lack of support from administrators in dealing with student misbehavior, as well as issues with district-wide communication. Poor student behavior affects the quality of other students' learning, as do all of the aforementioned problems, and we emphasize the importance of finding solutions quickly. Um, district officials, including Superintendent Dr. Brown, have been subpoenaed to appear in a court case about the incident that occurred in a bus in October, where a student reportedly threatened to shoot up a bus. The Tompkins County Sheriff's Department has stated that they did not care back from the district after a request for information, and the District Attorney of Tompkins County stated that when a threat of gun violence is made in a school setting, there is no excuse for the school district to not immediately alert law enforcement. Police reports say that law enforcement was not notified until around twenty-four hours after the incident, according to the Ithaca Boys. We would like to ask for more information regarding this situation and whether or not our district has a structured protocol to respond to these situations and inform law enforcement once they are made aware of a threat or an incident occurs.
I would like to give an update about our work regarding sexual harassment and assault prevention and education. Um, as previously mentioned in lots of board meetings, Ms. Talclot, the Advocacy Center, and various students are working together to address these issues. Uh, most recently, I was able to present the toolkit that Lydia Dorr, a senior at LACS, and I created while interning at the Advocacy Center. This toolkit is called I Support Survivors and consists of informational posters and awareness stickers designed by us for school faculty and staff to learn how to better support survivors of sexual relation, sexual and relationship violence, as well as how to stand against this violence within the school environment. Um, I presented this toolkit at the IHS staff meeting last Wednesday, and it seems like this district-supported material was very well received. I encourage teachers and staff to look through the information first to educate themselves, and then when they feel ready to provide a safe space, to put up the poster, which is titled Sexual Harassment Is Never Okay, and the I Support Survivors sticker in their classrooms and learning environment. We hope that these resources will create feelings of support and inclusivity to students. I'm already seeing, uh, teachers putting up these posters and stickers and receiving positive feedback from students. Another problem that's been a topic of heated discussions and concerns for students are the new gender-neutral bathrooms in GNH. I don't think us as board reps, the students or parents, were well informed that these new bathrooms would be gender-neutral, meaning that there will be multiple stalls in one space that all people can use. Students are hearing this information from teachers just talking about it in the hallways and not direct communication from our principal or administrators. There are several students expressing concern about the possibility of inappropriate behavior and increased harassment in these shared spaces, especially towards women. Even though there would be ceiling-to-wall stalls, as we heard while using the toilet, the space of the bathroom is still shared. Uh, we are concerned that because of these potential dangers, students, especially women, will feel unsafe and uncomfortable using these bathrooms. Um, there has been discussions within classrooms about these bathrooms, and many students are worried not just about, uh, harassment, but people who are not educated or respectful about bathroom aids. An example of this, uh, example that girls are concerned about were boys or like the guys being like immature when seeing them with period products and making them uncomfortable. Um, this is already happening with like period products in stalls, uh, in bathrooms anyway. Uh, the boys in our class discussion, in, in the class discussions, uh, which were not teacher-led and were mostly, uh, student-based, also seem to agree to keep gender-neutral bathrooms. Students understand and support having bathrooms that everyone can use, but we currently have multiple single-stall gender-neutral bathrooms that fulfill this need. And the general consensus is that we don't need to increase, uh, these to multiple-stall bathrooms. Um, I have also been talking with Zara, who says that there are multiple-stall gender-neutral bathrooms at LACS and are fairly well-used, which is a good sign, but IHS has a very different social ecosystem than LACS, and students don't think this will be the case. One solution would be to continue the construction of the bathrooms, and when they are finished, label just one area as like, not in the other areas, women, as we have right now. Uh, we appreciate that the, I guess our district is trying to be more inclusive, but we would also like to app- uh, invite our administrators to hear our concerns as well. And if I'm misinformed about any of this information, keep letting us know.
Thank you all. Working fine.
Um, I want to thank Grace for, one, your, uh, returying and forthrightness with the toolkit and putting that together, because we've been talking about this for a long time and it's outstanding, and thank you, I truly respect that. Um, this is more a question regarding the gender-neutral bathroom. I think what I hear you saying is this, folks aren't ready for it yet.
Yeah.
Some, I, I need to clarify that, but that's the impression I'm getting from what I hear you saying, and there needs to be more dialogue moving forward and some understanding. Um, regarding some of the comments with the, uh, presentation at HR, um, you know, we are talking about that and unpacking some of what was presented. Um, it, there was a lot, um, and there was, you know, some things with our goal, um, as a board, as a district, is always to be collaborative and address issues and concerns. Um, and we are looking to do that. I think, you know, speaking to teacher shortage and looking at the, at a national issue, at a national crisis, is one conversation that's going on in every single school district. I understand burnout is real, especially post-COVID, uh, in every field, and when you're front-facing, highly populated student activities, the burnout's going to be even that much more. Um, and we totally understand that and, uh, are open to moving forward, what that conversation looks like, how do we do that, what does that look like? Um, and how do we do that in a healthy way? Because stressed people are not always cooperative. I know I can get cranky. Um, but, you know, I also want dialogue and language that, that says, you know, we recognize that there's work being done, and that folks are doing a lot of things. I think, you know, for the last six months, we've had Navira, um, sharing what she's been doing to recruit, and what the student, school district's efforts to retain teachers and staff has been, and how aggressively we've been doing that. Um, and that's been something that we've really just been just pushing forward as much as we can. Um, one reality for Ithaca that we need to realize is if you're not from here, and most teachers actually gravitate back to the areas where they grew up, and it can be a hard place to want to stay, especially in the wintertime. Uh, so we need to build community. We need folks come here, and, um, sometimes they only last two years. But also, you know, it's okay if some people want to go back to where they come from or they want to be someplace else. Um, we have a lot of things going on here, we're putting a lot of work forward, and, um, you know, sometimes some people don't think that this, it's a fit for them. But we want, we do want people to be happy. Happiness is collaborative and it's a decision. So I don't want to overemphasize, but I think there's work to be done, but I think it's work to be done by all.
Um, I would just like to follow up on Clarice's comments about Pitch Night, um, because
Thank you for judging.
So I, I, um, entered my second year as a judge at Pitch Night, and every year, I think, uh, the groups get better, but what I, what I, and, and, you know, you're getting these like wonderful, wonderful, uh, uh, ideas, like, you know, Grace's team is basically like little portable clean rooms that can go in any lab, and I'm thinking, what was I doing when I was her age? I was figuring out how to sneak into bars under a because like I was doing nothing socially useful whatsoever. And then there's all the wonderful, wonderful things. But one thing that I just wanted to bring up for public consumption is something that, that, um, Mr. Crywe commented on, that, you know, this project Lead the Way is a national program that actually historically came out of Rochester Institute of Technology. Um, and Ithaca High School was one of the first schools that actually piloted it, and it's now, it's not only national, um, it's around the world. I've been reading, I was reading, um, applications from India where they're doing Project Lead the Way. Uh, Ithaca City School District is the only district in the entire panoply of that program that has this particular class, which is Pitch Night. And this was the, the, the brainchild of an ICSD, uh, alum, ICSD parent, um, and a, a, a co-grade robotics parent, Ela Burbank, ten years ago.
She was our mentor, yeah.
Who, who was looking at what that class used to be, who basically, basically a bunch of, uh, year-long independent studies, where kids just, you know, kind of worked on stuff on their own. And, and she brought together community members to be mentors and judges and get all of this, and that this is literally, you are the only students in the world who have this class to do, and it's, it's amazing. And I, I do think that's indicative of some of the great stuff this community does when it works together, and it's students, it's teachers, it's, it's parents, and it's just people in the community who want to support the school, and, and that's where we're at our best. And it's been very tough to do things like that in the last three years. Um, and it's wonderful to be able to improve on those again. And I hope to see that keep going. And I'm fascinated by your comments about gender-neutral bathrooms, because when people were lobbying as years ago for gender-neutral bathrooms, I'm thinking, is, are people really going to be comfortable with that? I think already, yeah.
Like, I think there's a difference when we say gender-neutral bathrooms. There's a difference between the single-stall bathrooms that we have and the multiple stalls that we're constructing right now. And I think, well, I can't have single-stall bathrooms, but when I say gender-neutral bathrooms, I mean the like single stalls and not the multiple stalls, which I think we should clarify clearly.
Yep.
And are the multiple stall ones in, in operation, in use now? Have they been completed, or they're about, they're
These are the ones being built, yeah.
In construction, so people haven't actually had the experience of using them at IHS?
Not yet.
Not yet.
There are
That was just for clarification. Can, can I ask Grace one more question?
Um, I, I just find it interesting that you were talking about sexual harassment and dealing with that, and then the gender-neutral and how, uh, female students feel differently, and I wonder if your work with sexual harassment kind of correlates with the fear of gender-neutral bathrooms for women students, like I'm curious.
Um, so I guess personally, there could be a correlation, um, but other students who don't, aren't in that work, when they just have their regular classroom sessions, also feel the same way as well.
Right, I mean, I guess is it, is it a culture thing with, for females? Like you just don't feel safe? Is it beyond the period products and you don't feel safe, or?
Yes, it's like beyond that, like, girls are also worried that, yeah, like if there's guys, they might not feel safe in a space that's only meant for like their gender.
Zara? I, I want to ask one question back, I do have a goal to stand about this. Um, so are you gonna, is it, uh, the same one that we're doing in IHS? Or not in IHS, sorry, very different school, at LACS with the, uh, the main like hallway door not being there?
It's a different layout, so it's slightly
And, and what, I'm curious in what way, because it's gonna, yeah, I don't want to be misinformed. How is it different than what we're doing across?
So the, the bathrooms at LACS are sort of longer and thinner and have, I think, four or five stalls. Um, the bathrooms at IHS and GNH, um, are two and two, so the scale is different and, and it didn't make, uh, as much sense, I was talking to Grace about it. Um, we looked at it various different ways, and it didn't, um, we just couldn't fit as much in. We do open it up and make it more and larger, more of a space, and so we, um, the doors are, I can't remember if they're honestly, if they're doors on or not.
So, that's another thing too, right? So, Zara
Can be changed, but regardless.
Right, so that's actually can be a building, I mean, we want a district goal of inclusion, right? We want to strive for everyone to know that they have space by law, and just because that's our value system, that they can utilize, that they feel safe, and that they, um, that have, that they have access for, right? So our single stalls, you're right, Grace, they are inclusive, they're restrooms, right? They are a restroom. Um, our other restrooms that have multiple stalls within a space and sinks along the wall, right? If, if, at like LACS, we did not install the doors on the hallways back on, um, because then we could have a vision for them for, or where people are washing their hands, and you have full privacy in those stalls when utilizing them, right? In terms of the toilet itself has a room, right? And those toilets have rooms within a room that have sinks. So the high school, we have not ordered signage, we have not put into the contractors of what that signage says. What you're saying, what you're saying is about signage, right? How is that going to be labeled to identify who is welcome to use that space? And so that conversation does not have to be, there does not have to be a determination tonight. If more time needs to be taken to figure out what that signage says to say, you are welcome in this bathroom, right, then that can happen and continue to happen.
Um, so I, I want to help with this like a little bit as an LACS student, because recently, we had our, we have five bathrooms total. Our, we have two bathrooms upstairs, and both of those were recently converted to be gender-neutral and be capital-come-in. Um, for LACS, this has definitely, we have the community adjusted. There was people that were concerned, well, do we need this many? What if we did the smaller bathrooms downstairs? And as a community, very quickly, once we actually got the bathrooms, I mean, again, I would like, I mean, I don't want to, I'm sorry, you guys, but like, we are a more progressive school.
Yeah.
We are more open to, I think, a lot of concepts, um, especially around gender identity and being more inclusive with that. Um, and people have less of a problem at LACS with, uh, sharing the bathroom with someone else. Um, I also think we are more of a, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we do differently, so this is obviously not a hundred percent. Um, and maybe it's something to do with the doors, but it's, we don't, I think the, the environment of the bathroom is very different than a gendered bathroom. Of, it is kind of a smaller, there's less the sink space, it is a very, and also with the size of, like the, just the space, it's set up of where people aren't really in there that long. We usually, there's not very many people near the sinks. There's not nearly any communication. Um, and I also think that it makes sense, especially for your school as a justice, to still have gendered bathrooms in some spaces, but I think having no gender, uh, gender-neutral bathrooms that are installed set up is a massive step backwards. Um, I think as a district, we are, want to respect identity, and I think it is incredibly important that we continue to respect gender identity. Um, I think having, this is something that definitely is going to take adjusting for students, for teachers, for mentalities, for everything. Um, and again, as I said, I think having gendered bathrooms in some situations is still going to be good for the school as students, uh, adjust to the system. And maybe then as well will come out of this, maybe there'll be a conversation around, this just doesn't work, people, there is actual legitimate concerns, this isn't safe. But I think that this is something that definitely needs to be given a chance, because I think it is still very important to respect gender identity in this way. Yeah.
Yeah, I just have one thing, like kind of in general, I guess, moving forward on this, uh, I just want to like emphasize the importance of like the feedback in general. Uh, uh, because we don't necessarily know if this is how the majority of students feel, like this is what we've been hearing, but also like I have, I guess, never been asked, like what I thought of this. Um, and I think at the end of the day, students are the ones who are going to be using the bathrooms, so I think just going forward, it's really important just to ask students, I guess, what their input is on, on this.
And, and just to give you a little history, there was a push for years for gender-neutral bathrooms.
Which we now have.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, Pat?
No, no, we're just making a gesture.
Okay.
I'll reply to that.
We get confused all the time.
Um, just wanted to, uh, follow up on the comment about the pitch that, class. So with some former board members, I've had the pleasure of being on a lot of our panels to judge on your ideas, what we've heard. Lots of colleges, including Cornell. And like folks who participate at, I have a stack somewhere in my office, this high from the floor, of discarded ideas, right? Ideas that were brilliant, but never moved anywhere. All my time, I have to say, the best idea I ever heard making high schools. They weren't from here, but they were high school students who in 2016, pitched the idea of having, uh, antibacterial dispensers at all New York City subways and buses. And when chaos came, we all thought, wow, those kids were really on to something. Now they're on buses. I don't think that they made it to the New York City subway. But that's an example of how, um, high school students' ideas could have really propelled this whole society. So it is appreciated, you know, some people out there taking it very seriously. And I've seen, uh, groups in the past from here, they made the pitch, go to Cornell and, and try and get funding for some of their great ideas. So all power to you. Emily, if I tell you what you're doing, can't change the case.
The issue that we could have brought up about, uh, controversy concerning when the school district would call in law enforcement. And this is something that has been discussed in great nuance and detail and thoughtfulness in relation to both this, the safety plan, which is still in draft form, the code of conduct, which is still in draft form. And, and I just wanna stress that it is not black and white. And, um, the idea that somebody, let alone, uh, a chief, uh, law enforcement officer would suggest that it's as black as white, as black and white as no excuse for not calling the police is, is quite surprising to me.
I thought you were gonna keep going. Uh, let me, let me just add to that. Having a legal background and having, uh, an ex-partner who's been an entire career at law enforcement. The impression that I took away from the comments was that this executive team has no idea about what's happening, no idea about which situations represent, uh, I don't wanna say actual security grants now that we know what's happening, it's important news. But the insinuation was appreciated. We have a decades-long relationship with the agency with which we interact on a fairly frequent basis, which is if the police department. We don't have a significant relation with the sheriff's department simply because a very small portion of this district lies within that territory. But we have full faith that our executive team understands the mission and can make those decisions because they have relationships with families and with the children of this district. So, yeah, it was, it was the insinuation that somehow nine of us and our team don't care about the safety of students and families in this district. That was reprehensible. And, uh, I will probably have a chance to see the sheriff at some point, but I'll say that to him directly.
All right. Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that.
Uh, I guess, I'm running this meeting, yes. So I guess we can move on, uh, we, to the consent agenda.
I will move the consent agenda as presented.
Say. Is there anything that anybody needs to speak to? I don't really see anything. So all in favor? That's everybody. And so then we have. Uh, Dr. Brown?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. Um, I'm, just one quick update, I'm not successful. Although I've been trying to figure out how to use panoply, I mean, you're in a sentence. You haven't figured it out yet, so if you can help me use that as part of my update in the future. Whoever said that word?
Pat said it.
Panoply?
Panoply?
Panoply.
Panoply, panoply, that's what I said. Can you, can you say that in a sentence for me, please?
He did.
Trisha, can you read it back?
Panoply or panoply?
It's been, it's been a long day, I'm sorry, I needed to try to say that word and I messed it up, obviously.
Next, next time, I'm just gonna shout out panoply or I'll find something else that is never generally used.
I do. Erin, I was like, what's that?
Anyway.
I read a lot of nineteenth century novels.
Just quickly, just a shout out to our young people and the adults who are part of our accommodation ceremony. We had our first accommodation ceremony of the year, uh, this afternoon at five o'clock. We recognized, I think, two hundred and forty young people and adults for state and then national achievements. So it was great, uh, we will do our next ceremony, I think we're gonna try to do it in June. So we're gonna have a big one in June, hopefully outdoors. And again, a shout out, those ceremonies are the best things we do, cheers, my respect. So thank you to all the folks who look, and particularly, uh, Emily, Emily Tracy Long, who puts all that together. She does an excellent job. Thank you for the opportunity.
So more reply made?
I have an update.
A panoply, a complete or impressive collection of things. For a sentence, a delicious inventive panoply of insults.
That sounds like a nineteenth century novel.
See, I don't even notice that I'm using words like.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for the levy, we cannot waste that. And now we are very happy to be hearing from our folks who are guiding us through this massive multi-year capital project, multi-year and multi.
Can we call it a panoply? Do you? I have a larger.
My team always looks out for me.
I do, I do, and I, you know, as much as we can like focus, right? Bathrooms are one itty bitty slice, the high school's one slice, LACS one slice. This project, where it is correct, it is massive, right? It is like, I am, I feel so honored to be able to be the district representative. Dan Bryman has been helping me, Lily, Dr. Brown, I mean, there's just so many of us. Mary, I mean, they're, we're all working as a team to do this. But I am so honored to be the voice sort of this evening with my colleagues who are just absolutely fantastic. We have such a gifted team. For those of you that don't know, we have Cindy Dussette from Campus Construction. She's our senior project manager. And then we have Chris Glavitz, who are, is our lead architect for the project. We have been the team since the beginning when we've sort of just been stewarding this. We've been working with, uh, building leadership. And you're right, we can always do better, we can always do better with, um, the feedback that we get and, and the influence of the design development. And we keep growing, um, we're gonna talk about some exciting work that we're gonna be doing, um, you know, in playground design and youth voice. So we, we keep, I think every time and every moment, we get better and better. So tonight, what we're gonna try to do is give an overview of sort of like what, where we've come from and then where we're going. And I'm gonna keep pushing the button with great hopes that it's gonna work. And if not, well, uh, you know, I'll just pretend and swipe like that. Thank you, Trisha. So when I say, right, like it's multi-year, so notice here, right, we started in twenty nineteen. We're not yet to twenty twenty-four and all of these yellow lines all throughout, right? Represent different phases, different elements of the project. We tried to break down this one hundred and twenty million dollars of semi-plans kind of, uh, in progress, yet to be developed, um, over this course of time so that there was some predictability about phasing of this, right? So you can notice here, um, you know, we don't mark it, but there was, uh, you know, there was, oh, we did actually, COVID, right? Uh, we didn't have this on the original slide. This happened, um, and it was really very interesting to do capital project work during a pandemic. Um, so schedules got changed, things got shifted, but we really have been trying to push things forward, right? In a manner, um, that, that we really are trying to address the needs of our students, our staff, and our communities. Cause our buildings are our community centers, right? We're really proud of those small elementary schools that serve communities and all of the people that live around them. We're really proud that the high school hosts events from all over the nation, really. So we wanna really have a facility that represents the quality of our program. And so you'll see here all along the way, there's different phases. And what, um, Cindy's gonna do is sort of talk about where we've already been, what's sort of complete, right? Um, you'll see here phase one, she'll talk a few things about phase two, which we're entering into the next big section in the summer. Um, typically in summer, you'll see a lot of work happening. Um, and then Chris is gonna jump in after Cindy sort of talks about what's completed with sort of the future phases, right? And all along the way here, you have to remember that all of these projects have elements to them, right? So each of the phases have a design development phase where you're sort of percolating all these ideas and you're meeting with stakeholders and you're deciding, can we do this, can we not do this? Can we, should we increase the budget here? Oh, wait, this idea came up. LACS was completely done with students, right? We had many, many meetings back and forth around the design, um, work. And that was pre-COVID, right? Having, um, right, Tetra Tech's offices, they hosted. You know, then from the design development phase you go and those, all those plans that go into the documents, hours and hours of work that are vetted by created, vetted, created, vetted, go then into the state education department. And we sit and we wait, and we wait some more. And then finally, it's approved, right? After months and months and months of waiting. And once those, those documents come back to us, we go out for bid. And bid, uh, means that we actually get contractors to bid on the work, right? And say, I can do the general, um, contractor work, I could do the site work, I can do the plumbing, we can do the HVAC, we can do the electrical. And all those pieces come together, they get the big bid set of documents, they, they put their bids in. Um, we open those bids publicly, we award the work to the lowest bidder after vetting them. And then the construction development begins. And, and you go through all those plans with those contractors to make sure it's all feasible. They start to, um, you know, get all of their, uh, materials and supplies and their workforce in order and they work on schedules with Cindy. And then the work begins, which is construction. And so that's sort of what those yellow lines represent, each one of them. Every one of those goes through that phase. So with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Cindy, who is gonna sort of talk about, um, phase one. I'm gonna move over here so that I am sort of.
Thanks, Trisha. So in phase one over here, you can see all the buildings that were touched. Uh, some of the high points are the transportation building. We repaved the entire bus parking lot. Here at the high school, we redid the pool, we renovated the welcome center, we renovated and created the nurses and guidance suites. Uh, a lot of the smaller work that was done, uh, at the elementary schools were for secure vestibules. We also did the stadium and the press box under phase one. So most of that work, all of that work is complete. And we're in the nets right now, closing out those contractors. We're about halfway done with getting those prime contractors closed out so the district can submit their final copy forms. Any questions on phase one, the students or the board members?
Yes, more.
Yes. What's happening with cult? Is it finished? Eric, because we're planning on.
York.
York, sorry.
York.
I know, I almost said the same thing earlier.
What's happening, is it done?
It is done, we have some panels that have had failure. And today, we got a final resolution of how to proceed and that's been conveyed to the contractor. So we're hoping in the next couple of weeks, we can get them organized in there and complete that work. And we will definitely let, um, Amanda and Dr. Brown know when that's complete. So these meetings can start to take place.
And those panels were in lower York, upper York is done.
Yes, lower, upper York.
It was that back sort of, kind of ledge area. Those panels due to the moisture.
But the spaces are available and have been, been, been used by, um, the high school community since April of twenty-two. Any other questions? All right, we can move on to the next slide. So here, um, are some of the miscellaneous things that we've also done. We, um, have worked on the temperature control upgrade for the both middle schools. For many of the students, maybe when you were there as middle schoolers, you experienced the fluctuations in temperatures. So we've upgraded those to be digitally controlled, uh, controls now instead of what we called pneumatic, which were by air. Uh, and if a compressor went down, you had no control. This way, it's electronic and computerized. Um, we've also completed the entire high school roof replacement. Um, and we're cleaning that project up now and getting ready to close that contract out as well. Some of the other ancillary work, um, that's been done under capital outlay projects are the Caroline and, um, Kega Heights Elementary Schools. Their gyms, taking down those, uh, scary partitions that have the keys of putting curtains in and redoing flooring and some, um, leechers. And, um, we're looking at, or have done some parking flooring and courtyard work also in the, in the mix right now for Northeast. Any questions on any of that work? Phase two, our current large project. We are about halfway through, we're almost halfway through. Many of the buildings here, um, started in the spring of twenty-two. So we started at the, um, at Lehman, at DeWitt, at South Hill. And, um, Ed, Ed Field, thank you, with a little bit of work inside. But mainly, that work is the geothermal well field was drilled, uh, last summer, which will tie into new equipment in the, uh, building for the heating system. Get rid of the old boilers on the global, the geothermal well system, uh, with heat pumps for, for energy efficient, get the district off of fossil fuels for that building. That work will continue this coming summer. Ed Field, this summer is gonna be a wreck, let's just be honest with it. We're gonna be tearing up the front of the school to take out the fuel oil tank that's currently in use. We're gonna be gutting the boiler room to put those new pieces of equipment in to work with the geothermal field. We're gonna be renovating inside and taking every heating unit out of every classroom, some rooftops, some ceiling units and replacing them. So the entire building is gonna be tore up. Chris will talk about some additional work, not in phase two, that's gonna also take place at Ed Field this coming summer. But for the work that we've started, um, we've got, uh, an addition going on at South Hill with, um, the new entrance that faces Aurora Street and, uh, the new driveway and parking lot that, uh, we've heard great things that have alleviated a lot of the traffic problems that have been historical up there at that building. So we're very happy that that work has, has relieved the congestion, uh, on that hill. As a wit, we're renovating the auditorium, uh, we did some toilet room renovations, and, uh, redid the kitchen floor. Uh, we'll be renovating the front entrance there next summer to make a secure vestibule and put up some cannibes for places for kids to hang out while they're waiting to get picked up, uh, by parents or buses. And then, oh, this is where Chris is gonna pick up with phase three, which is upcoming one.
Thanks, Cindy. Yeah, so, uh, there's big projects and small projects. Future work coming up, uh, the yellow highlighted areas are those areas at Ed Field that are gonna be re-roofed. Yes, it's all over. So as we do the next roof, we're doing one kind of every project. And this is the basic infrastructure improvements that we do over time, right? Every day, your roof is a day older. So, uh, just something that the, that we do a lot of planning around and look forward and try to anticipate the next roofs, um, along with the staff that's in those buildings every day and know it's leaking here or it isn't leaking. So that's coming up soon. Another part of that is replacing all the windows at EJM as well as doing some masonry improvements. So some of this, some of this parapet coping up at the top is just, it's aging out. I think it's, uh, it's gone on pretty close to a hundred years old. So it's, it's had a good life of service and it's time to replace that kind of stuff for safety and for, uh, you know, the, the longevity of the building. Also, part of, uh, part of the space at Ed. Also, part of part of the space at Enfield that Cindy alluded to earlier was some improvements to the bus drop-off area. Part of part of the goal there is to take advantage of the feeling of children when they arrive at a school, right? And do you, I mean, here's the whole, here's the whole picture, right? Again, you've had a lot of work to make your facilities serve as long as they have, right? And that's a testament to the to the ongoing care that you take in your buildings. But refreshing the look and trying to make an environment where kids get off the buses here and and have something that's a little more exciting to them. We're putting the the murals back up that the kids of, you know, previous decades completed to, you know, the goal being to get kids to enter a school in a way that is exciting and they're ready to learn when they sit down in classrooms. Or don't sit down. There are some other entry pieces there. Okay, moving forward to the high school. So Cindy talked about decarbonizing Enfield. We have a similar opportunity because there's lake source cooling that comes right past Ithaca High School as on its way up to Cornell. And so we're gonna be taking more advantage of lake source cooling to extend the cooling through the rest of the campus. As we're doing that, we're gonna be replacing aging mechanical equipment and the controls, right? So the the mechanical equipment is the stuff that, you know, makes the heat or moves the heat from one place to another and and blows the air around and stuff. And the control system is like the brains, it tells those pieces of equipment what to do and when and how much.
Hold on, Chris, pause for dramatic effect. Or reiterate what you just said, because I've been here for a decade, and every day, people have asked for air conditioning at the high school. So I wanna make sure everybody, we're getting air conditioning at the high school.
And and dramatic. And in conjunction to that, we often hear that Cornell's not doing enough. Right, we're not just asking, everybody in town, and everybody who wants them to contribute more. And I don't think anyone did argue that this will be a significant contribution. But it looked like, you know, what folks typically ask me for, but this is huge.
Yeah, so the the district has an agreement. Thank you, yes, cool, that's the bottom line, cooling to the campus, right? It started with with G and H, right? Those are the the places where there's the bulk of the teaching and learning happening, especially on that second floor, it's hot, it's hot, right? So we're excited to do that. This is gonna take about four years to get all this done. So it's gonna be a process, so anyone who's currently in high school now, sorry. To talk to your middle school, elementary school friends, and get them all excited for it.
Sibling.
Yeah, siblings, friends, community members. So, you know, the sort of the the redder part is what what we're gonna try to tackle first, and then the 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 gold parts later. This'll include also a a total reorganization of right out, right out there. The drop-off, because this is also another front entrance to the school. Buses come in here, a lot of visitors come, improving the safety and the flow of traffic around there. Importantly also, a renovation to the STEM area that some of you can see some some imagery over, so we're really excited about that. And we will, which Jedi, I think. So we've done some renderings, we've done a lot of virtual reality with with Mr. Bregel, Mr. Krygli, and students around visioning what what this would look like, walking around VR goggles and then trying to experience the space in electronic format.
Yeah, I was just like, like today, I saw this with the VR goggles, and it was really cool.
Great, we have, we have.
Kids influenced that design, right? So.
Yeah, last year, we had a series of sessions with Code Red folks and other STEM-related folks who are taking, students who are taking those classes primarily, and had some really great feedback about, you know, how the, you know, the classroom layout and and details about how that that's gonna be laid out. So really excited to to help that whole side of the curriculum be supported by the facilities more. There's also a connection between being made between this part of the building and sort of the back hallways of the of sort of the athletic suite over there. So you'll be able to get from from gym to lunch quicker. As a as a teen, I would appreciate that. And but that will that will probably increase just visibility of the STEM spaces in the curriculum to more students, because right now, it's kind of like this year, like end of the building, like why would you go there if you weren't already going there, right? So we hope to to get some more folks exposed to to what's happening in this part of the building. So these are some other renderings from from different areas, and we're excited about the big space down here, that's sort of designed for the build season, right? With the with the high clearance to try to simulate some of the course that you will, that your students and your program and your friends will be competing on as they as they go really to the national stage, so. There's also a science room here, this is meant to be a a multi-use science room, so it's got peninsulas and some gas and water. And, you know, the physics folks can can hang things from the bar joists and swing around bowling balls or whatever, and do some some laboratory type of work. In the next stage of of this work, someone mentioned the the playground at Fall Creek. And this is a very important space to our community, right? To a lot of folks. My my boys grew up planning on that, right? So so I get that as well. And we're really excited to have some some partners, Dr. Loback from Cornell, who has done a lot of research on this, and and it's really her her career to to study play and study what what spaces help students use this as a learning environment and from a lot of different different aspects. So we're looking forward to having a community process around that to see what that that redesign looks like. Also, BJM on the on this part of the screen, there's a little bit more work to 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 make some improvements to the cafeteria area at at BJM. It's a relatively small piece, but that'll happen also at Fall Creek. So those were two eating spaces that just seemed like they needed a little refreshing to help them feel better for eating.
So somewhere who's not on facilities, this may have come up. The high school spaces in particular, have you guys discussed, or can you speak to how those new areas for STEM are going to facilitate more project-based learning?
Yeah, could we try to go back a couple? I'm not sure, we probably can't really see a whole lot in in these images. But the space that is, okay, so we're renovating about 10,000 square feet or so, the existing space, taking those existing rooms and combining them and reorganizing them. There's also an addition, and in that addition is a relatively open and flexible space, which is good for for project-based learning. So you get furniture that can move around, power coming from the ceiling in a in a way to support like different kinds of things. Like, okay, we're gonna do a couple weeks on this type of project, so we're gonna roll the tables in, and we're gonna set it up in this way. Okay, it's build season now, so we're gonna roll the tables out, and that's gonna be the Code Red space. And.
That that's one of the flexible spots we're talking about.
This is, this has more of the equipment in here, that's probably gonna stay where it is. But if we go one, we're going back and forth on you, Chris. If you go one more forward, please? So this is in the addition, and you can see, it's it's kind of this big, open space. And that's the space I was talking about, that that we're trying to design in as flexible a way as possible.
But I also think that teachers, I've been in a lot of those design meetings, in the classrooms that are gonna be along the edge, the corridor edge of the space, they intend to have a lot of project-based learning occurring in them with collaborative teams with the kids.
That's right.
Working on independent projects or group projects. So I think the classrooms, as well as the, that's where, if you will, the designing of the of the learning would go on in the project. Then they'll go out to the the shop spaces, and depending on what what their project is, it's a carpentry project, it's a packaging project, it's, you know, a welding project, a metal project. They would go to that specific work zone in the larger area as well. And that's been sort of the vision from the the main teachers for that space to sort of create individual spaces or rooms for those types of projects.
Yeah, thanks. All right. Yeah, it looks, I don't have any image of this, but it looks it looks pretty simple and straightforward. There's rows of computers around down both sides, and then just a big table in the middle. So we heard a lot from the students when they're doing like small robotics projects and things like that. They're on the computer, they're modeling things, they're turning, they're building, they're going back and they're modeling, and they've got chairs with swivel, that type of space, yeah. And, you know, down down the road, no, I'm sorry, there is a, we're looking at, you know, the the bus garage facility that was repaved. And looking at the mandates, you know, coming from New York State, and how does, you know, how does Ithaca transition to a zero emission, which generally is gonna mean electric buses, and what does that infrastructure look like? And so we're planning through a multi-phase sort of project, I'm not gonna get into it, because we discussed it out of the meetings, happy to answer questions if you have that. But the plan, we're starting on it, so.
Right, one thing that I will say, in the budget that is going out to the voters in May, right? You will see Proposition Two will have a request to the voters to approve the purchase of electric buses, so I think we'll up to five. And then also some infrastructure work to be able to install chargers at the bus garage to get us, you know, charging for those five, first five buses. And then we'll continue to grow that and continue to grow that each year. So that's going to be in the May proposition. So if you are of voting age, you or your families, it's a really good thing to sort of let people know and educate them about that proposition. So that Proposition One is the budget, Proposition Two would be our utilization of the capital reserve to purchase those buses and do that work.
Thanks. Any questions?
It's exciting, everybody. So please, you know, visit the spaces, see what's being done. If you want tours, we can we can probably arrange for that as well, so let us know. Zara's living it every day.
I landed one question about the EV buses. Are we doing any of this work in collaboration with Bosse's for this first round? Or is this all in-house?
So Bosse's supported us, they had received an opportunity to enter into a collaborative with NICEAC, and that was early on, that was like about a year and a half ago. And so there was some data that we were able to gain from that process. But Bosse's then, sort of that support, they're there as a partner, but really, it's on it's on the districts to sort of roll these things out. Business officials have been talking to say, like, it would be really great if there was actually a, I don't know, just like sort of a green initiative cooperative kind of through Bosse's, where all the districts could come together. Because we are, we're all going to be trying to move this forward, and we all need to start thinking about when I take, when Ithaca takes the sports team to wherever, we're gonna need to charge, right? And so what does that look like through Bosse's? That we can have a collaborative where we're actually utilizing each other's utility services, right? Without like running into that issue of like, we need an MOA, okay, I'll call, you know, Binghamton, and we'll see what we can do with Almira, and right? It would just be so much cleaner if we could sort of get Bosse's to steward all that.
They have asked you to comment. Speak to the group, just spin your heads around.
Oh, great, that's fun. Happy to do it, I'm not shy.
Your former people, they remind you of that.
Thanks, that's awesome.
Zara? This could be an important question, Chris. But it it is a hundred percent related, so it is related to electric blessing. It's about the Green New Deal. And we've been following through with a lot of initiatives of the Green New Deal and the ideas. And I was curious, like, are we committed to it at this point? I don't know, is this the place to address, like? No?
No, 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 I'm trying to answer it, because it's a city initiative.
But the ICSD.
Well, we're actually, and I don't want to, that's why I'm trying to answer correctly, because I, a lot of the initiative we're doing with this capital campaign will address some of the things in the Green New Deal. Because I know what the ultimate goal is to be, you know, carbon neutral footprint by X amount of years, you know? But we're implementing a ton of stuff and updating things and making them more energy efficient. So we will be meeting that, I don't know to the extent of the Green New Deal that I couldn't speak in specific.
I think yesterday, let me try and put a spin on it. So last year, when the students came and proposed that the district sign on, they were very serious about it. And Grace and her colleagues chimed in as well. And I think at that time, we tried to get across, we might have been successful, actually. We tried to get across that a lot of the bullet points in that ICSD Green Deal were underway. And I say, I don't think we were successful in communicating that, because it didn't seem to be taken as if we were serious about it, right? But we knew these things were on the way. And I don't think we've come back together, Barbara, looking at you, to have that further conversation, right? About about what pieces of that we still need to be held accountable, and what pieces we moved. So maybe it's time. Like, that was clear, it's in writing, we know we're on the buses, we know we're on G and L. Working on several with components of that, we should have that conversation again.
Correct, sweet. So I think I think revisiting all that energy from the summit, right? Like, and there's a lot of daily things, I think, you know, I'm looking at Dan, because I know there was some questions about composting, what are our goals around sort of management of waste? What are our goals around the types of items that we're utilizing in the cafeteria to prevent waste, right? Is that like installation of dishwashers or something? Some of these things could actually be done without major capital project work. But we're not, you know, we definitely, as a group, talk about the the LEED certification, and I mean, we've been, you've been doing those.
There is a veritable panoply of strategies around waste management, energy management. There's a, there are a whole lot of standards, there's a lot of work that's been done. And so there's there's a variety of things you could pick, like, we wanna focus on this, we wanna focus on that, whether it's LEED, whether it's WELL, and you're talking about occupants, whether it's a waste, waste stream audit, you know, there are all kinds of things that, that you can do.
So then, Cindy.
Okay, yeah.
Soon.
Yeah, so first, it's really awesome seeing all these like new spaces being built. One thing I think I heard you mention was for the LACS renovations, you're able to like include the LACS students, like in discussions surrounding these, right?
Yeah.
And I know this was done with IHS students with a tech wing. I was wondering, to my knowledge, I don't think this happened with the bathrooms. And I was wondering how we can include this discussion now.
It did.
It did happen. Yeah, it did. And really, I'll just be honest with you, we really centered the voices and experiences of those children who are not white, right? Or transgender. And really, I know as a cisgender woman too, who supports so much around sexual harassment prevention and response, I also I also totally hear, you know, some questions, and I've talked with kids for a number of years about about those as well. And Zara, some of your experiences, I think, around culture, right? I think would probably be helpful. So it might be nice to have some meetings with some LACS maybe students and staff and IHS students and staff to kind of help with the transition. Like, how do we wanna handle this? What what are some of the things that you all learned in order for us to to transition to this? And and it's tricky too, right? There's this balance in sexual harassment prevention and response. It also requires us to ensure that that discrimination against those who are transgender or cisgender, not performing, right, also doesn't happen, right? So like sexual harassment is like this very broad term. So we've gotta, we've gotta like figure out this both and together as as a community.
Yeah, I I really appreciate you saying that. And it's, I guess, good that we included the transgender non-binary students, because of course, we should center voices that maybe don't get as much like attention. But I think the next step, I don't know if this is possible, but also including the entire school as these bathrooms will be there. IHS weren't also in there too.
So the sign, again, right? So it's, we, I definitely hear you about the signage, and then even. So the sign, again, right, so it's, I definitely hear you about the signage, and then even the doors to the hallways, like, design on bathrooms, they're pretty standard for high schools, right? Like, um, in terms of just like, you know, the door, I don't think anybody would disagree that you wouldn't want privacy, right? Going to utilize a facility, even if it was a facility that was labeled, this is a girls' room, right? Or it's labeled, this is a boys' room, it's nice to have privacy when you utilize facilities. What we noticed, right, was that they're outdated and that they were even unsafe, right? We had a wall collapse in one of them, um, you know, on the side.
Which is why they started so soon.
That's why we started it so soon, right?
It was actually scheduled to start in February break.
Yeah.
But after the wall failure, we took them over in December for the stadium.
Yep. And when I say wall, I mean like, it wasn't just a stack of, um,
Tip, it was a wall.
It wasn't even a wall, it was just a stack of sort of concrete blocks, right? That over time, right, that, when you, if you lean on the door and you move, so that nobody was in there, it was like, it's okay, like, everybody's safe, and we moved that immediately forward, right, to do that.
Yeah.
So, so the designs of bathrooms aren't like that creative, what you're asking for though is voice around who is welcome in those spaces, and who is, what are they labeled for, right? And how, how, how does that represent the community culture? And what I'm hearing, and I think Lily is talking as well, is like, I really wanna make sure that we're also focusing on the culture. Because we can put doors and signage up, but if people feel unsafe because the culture isn't part of respect and dignity and care, and that's me as a dignity act coordinator for the district, that is unacceptable. More than any bathroom planning for construction purposes, no offense architect and construction manager, but culture is what makes a building.
Of course.
Right?
Yeah.
So that is, that is something that, from a dignity act, I'm happy to sit in on those too.
Yeah, trying to extract that culture and put it into built form that's gonna last 50 years, is this tricky, maybe we don't get it right? Um, I'll suggest one resource we might develop, which is kind of a map of Ithaca high school bathrooms, um, because there are different bathrooms that offer different amenities, and maybe just, you know, making, um, making it clear to folks that there is a choice of what, you know, what sort of facility, um, you feel comfortable using. And so giving a greater variety hopefully will help, um, help people feel more comfortable and giving people more choice.
Yeah, I have a question, I'm not, hope I'm not like delving into this too specifically, but in terms of like the students who were contacted regarding, or I guess, provided feedback on this, um, I just have like, I guess I'm just wondering how are like these students chosen, or like, so like the tech wing for instance, like, um, I don't know, like, a lot of students have classes there, so I'm just like curious as to how are students selected specifically to give this feedback on this? Like, what are the numbers like in terms of students?
So, it sounds like, uh, maybe it's like the question behind your question, like we ask every trans and non-binary student
Well.
in the, in the, like, talk to me a little bit more, like, you're hoping that we got like a really large sample size of those. Um, we've been hearing this for years, right, we have to start planning this, how many years ago?
Uh, well, we started, bathrooms, we started talking about in 2019.
Yeah.
We needed to know what we were gonna do throughout the district for elementary, middle and high school.
Pre-COVID.
Yeah.
Um, we, so we had some meetings with students, um, in the village, we've had, um, superintendent's advisory committee
Oh, yeah, we had a whole.
over the past several years, um.
We had students come to facilities committee, actually self-select.
Yeah. Yeah.
And come to facilities committee, those are all online, right?
Um, and then, um, in various conversations, I think, Miss Rover and I probably in terms of some of the connections that we've had with the students in different student groups over the past like three or four years, probably. Um, it's, this, yeah, right, 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 great. Um, and, uh, and so, you know, I heard you two talking like, is it like a majority of students are feeling this? We've also had some like, some focus groups, right, to get really in-depth, with a combination of, um, students who identify as cisgender, cistrans, cisretive, right, as, as, as not binary, and it's complicated too, right? Like, it's, um, not everybody's always gonna be 100% on the same page, but Grace is totally smart on this about how are we communicating collectively, about like what the requirements are. Um, and I'm also referring to like, choice is really important. Um, I've had some kids, uh, come to my office really bad, like, you're making a choice to do something that's, because you're not changing the bathroom, you're discriminating against. Right, we have a student, uh, take over of our Instagram account one year, gradual, was that five years ago? And, and they're like, I've had to do this, I've had to navigate bathrooms before we have any gender relationship lessons. I've had to navigate how to use this bathroom at the school where I'm supposed to feel included, right? Now there's legislation that says that we have to, right? We are, we, we must ensure that students have access to the bathrooms and appropriate bathrooms, right? They don't have to just like go to one place, right? Um, so now we have some more, right, um, and we're sort of slow in making this, this, this transition over. Yeah.
Yeah, and I like, I really appreciate that these discussions are happening, um, and I think like, I don't know, I'm, in general, I think it would be better if more students knew that these discussions were happening, because as far as I know, um, like I wasn't aware that these discussions were happening, Grace wasn't really aware, who are, I guess, among the more connected, so to say, students in the school district. So, um, and if students know that these discussions are happening, then they can also, I guess, get an opportunity to share their feedback. So I don't, just in general, I guess that kind of goes along with communication, but I think it's important, just so students know that these discussions are happening, because they're all really good opportunities for feedback.
You also need to recognize that you're talking years of conversation.
Yeah.
Like before you were in high school, these conversations weren't happening.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's why you probably haven't heard anything about it, right?
Okay. Yeah.
Just because as Amanda said, if you recall, the process for the phase that we're doing now that have the high school toilet rooms in there,
Yeah.
started in 2019 when I came to the project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those decisions had been made a long time before they, you actually see the fruition of the work.
So the decisions are made in 2019, is that what you mean?
The design started in 2019 for what we're currently feeling.
And the conversations were happening before that.
Right. But on the project, what you're seeing happening right now in your G-area bathrooms, those discussions of that design started in 2019. So it just takes a long time for the design process, and as Amanda said, the SED approval, which is months long, before you actually get to that point of construction.
Throw a pandemic in the mix there.
Yes, exactly.
But I think it's a super good point, because like, oh, we already talked about it. But kids are in high school for only four years, they're gonna have to reengage, you're totally right.
Right. Yeah. I think that's, I mean, I really meant it when I opened saying, we're never good enough with communication, we're never good enough. And we own it, every single day, we never say, collaborate enough, like, that's what we always try to do better, every single year. So, um, you know, I think Zara knows, like, the Green New Deal is a great example, you have district staff in that, you know, um, in that summit, planning it shoulder to shoulder, listening to students, we open it up, I mean, we get better, I think, every single time we have an opportunity to engage in topics that for some might feel really difficult, and for us, we welcome them, we want to hear the different perspectives. And, and, and I'm not joking when I say like, everything, minus like major design work, right? Which even that, with money, you can change. And then you run out of money for somewhere else, right? But, um, you know, we can always reconvene, rediscover what, what does signage look like, what does this look like? But really, at the heart of it is culture, right? It's culture.
Yeah, and I think if the discussions have been going on for like a while, I think, or if they were in the past, I think, like, that's probably why I didn't hear about them, but then I'm also thinking like, since these bathrooms are gonna affect students in the future and things change, um, I don't know, I guess.
No, you raised a great point, because we have to think, when the conversation starts and then the implementation happens,
Yeah.
you've got a time lapse, so you've gotta, you've gotta revisit it, absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You always have to say that.
So how do we get students in discussion, continued discussion? As reps, you all are gonna go back to the students, it's gonna be talked about in the tatler, we have the whole construction update on our website and all. So it's just reminding your peers that their involvement is crucial.
Yeah.
And as we come up with the EV charging station, the budget and everything like that, just reminded everyone. Right. And then anytime, you know, there's that, let's talk portal comes to us, right?
Yeah.
Students have access to that portal, it's not just for adults who wanna sort of tell us all the great things we're doing. I think you should tell us anytime, that let's talk portal is there for you, right? And, and, you know, it's a really great mechanism, we actually encourage it with the capital project, because it's an ability for us to also, um, you know, get the right people in on the messaging, get the right people pulled together. We have meetings after that sometimes, you might get an email response, but a lot of times it's followed up with a meeting, so those are, those are great to have. And, you know, I do, I can travel over there, you know, I can just walk across, just invite us to something. Um, and we can all also utilize our communication team, which is grown, um, since we started this. Um, I think that was one of the reasons why we wanted to grow the communication team, is to support things like the capital project, because one person to try to communicate to a building that, I, I'm, you know, I know all the leadership, but I'm not there every day, right? Like, to be able to support that communication cycle is really key.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
And the Chris and Amanda, participants, who have straight questions. And as far as I know, there's nothing else on the agenda?
Just dates of importance.
Dates of importance, what are our dates of importance? Facilities and finance next week, and policy is on Thursday, this Thursday.
Facility issues.
Yes, policy.
This Thursday.
The twelfth at five o'clock, okay. That'll work. Well, thank you, everyone, and we are adjourned.